This is the 226th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States. Colonel Rodifer, would you care to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you for all being here. Please silence your cell phones. I should have said that earlier. We have an item which I believe has come up since the posting of the agenda, and it is of sufficient urgency, we believe, that needs to be included in the agenda. It deals with hazardous materials and structure damage inside the rim fire area, and the fact that a team is coming to meet with our people to deal with that. So I need a motion to declare that, in fact, it has come up since the posting of the agenda, and is of such urgency to be placed on the agenda.
I move to place it on the agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any comment, public? All those in favor, seeing probably saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry four zero with Supervisor Royce Ebs today.
Okay, where are we going to place it on the agenda?
We're going to place it as item nine A. Okay. That being said, I'm going to change the agenda because we have important presentations for people who are out there doing important things in our county and need to get back to it. So I would like to shift and do items eight, all fire-related, eight, nine, nine A, ten, and eleven, and then we'll go back and do oral communication. So would you read item eight, please?
Presentation on the rim fire in consideration of approving a resolution continuing the local state of emergency as required by the California Emergency Services Act, Article fourteen, Section eight, six, three, OC.
Ms. Tracy.
Good morning. Tracy Riggs, County Administrator's Office and Office of Emergency Services. This morning, the item before you is to consider whether or not your board would, deems it necessary to continue the local state of emergency. It is required that your board review this item no less than every thirty days. Today, we do have members from the incident command team, Jerry McGowan, and from the bear team, Todd Ellsworth, to give you a presentation to follow up on this, to help you with your decision. In the meantime, just a general update in what the Office of Emergency Services has been doing is I've been working with the State Office of Emergency Services. We are trying to get all of our initial damage estimates that include both private and public damage. So we get those submitted to the state. They will begin working with us to secure the CDAA funding, which is a California disaster assistance grant funding, which right now, the governor has not extended to this incident. They will also begin working with us to see if we qualify for a presidential declaration, in which there is definitely a threshold that we have to meet on that. So to do that, I've been working with the city county of San Francisco, with San Francisco PUC, City of Berkeley. Larry Cope, as you know, is our economic development director, is working with the local private businesses to see if they have, what level of damage and losses that they have. And then we are also working with USDA for our ag, individuals who have had losses related to agriculture, such as cattle, livestock, and loss to their grazing ability and such. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and shift over to, unless you have questions for me right now.
I do have one question. At one point, there was a discussion in the EOC about possibly combining some of the other fires that were occurring simultaneously with ours as a state combined claim against the federal threshold. Has there been any follow-up to that discussion?
What we have been, what has been relayed to us from the state and from the federal government is that this item will stand alone. As we all know, it is the third largest fire in California history, but this fire will stand alone. We are all, we will be all included as one incident for all of these agencies, whether they're public or private, but it will stand alone as its own incident.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to introduce Jerry McGowan.
Please.
As incident commander for the fire team.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Sorry, that's what I was doing. Okay, a quick update on this fire, the rim fire.
Mr. McGowan, just for the record and for the public who's watching on live streaming, would you state your name, please, for the record?
Oh, Jerry McGowan, incident commander, incident commander of California Incident Management Team One.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, it's all good. Out here, and as we come into, out around, the most of the fires is in repair, working on, working on the fire lines. There's currently about one hundred and seventy-two miles of dozer line out there that is being repaired. So far, we've done about fifty-two miles worth of that. What that consists of is water barring, smoothing out some of the berms, and excavating, and making sure that the runoff and everything, preparing those fire lines and protecting the lands in the sense of water runoff and all that along here. As we go around, if we were just talking about the fire, this area, all this area has been checked for heat. We've done infrared flights. We've had people on the ground working, working in a lot of this area here in Division Foxtrot, which is out there by Wet Meadow, and coming around Duck Wall, and all that, making sure that everything is secure before we start fixing the lines and closing some of that stuff up. So as you come around here, you can see all this black area here, and that is meaning that it is very well secured, and that's what we're doing a lot of the work on, closing up those lines and all that. There is some heat, and there's still smoke out there in the area of the burn, and of course, you would expect that with a lot of large diameter fuel still burning, and there's still areas of unburn. When, a lot of people in general, even some of the firefighters, when you, when you look at this whole area, two hundred and fifty-six thousand acres, you would think, oh, man, it's all gone. And that's not necessarily true. It's, there are pockets, there's, there's a lot of mosaic areas here where the fire moderated and went down underneath the trees and didn't burn and consume all the overstory and all that, which is a good thing. And so there's a lot of, a lot of scattered, especially in the north area here, of the, that this is just a mosaic burn all through here. Now, the south end, that is Shemish and Ansenita and stuff that likes to burn, so you would expect that a lot of this down in the south end would be gone, and it is. So, and then in the park, it's the same way here, when, this is delineating the National Park, and, and it is a mosaic here, too. These are the most active areas right here, right here between Hetch Eetchy, Lake Eleanor, and Cherry Lake. And in that area there, there's a lot of rock, a lot of natural barriers up here, that this fire is just heading to, to where it's not going to go any farther than that. And we have four crews, four ten-person crews that are tying, tying areas of where it's, where the fire is just kind of finding its way through some of the fuels out there, and basically, we're tying those off to rock to rock so that it eliminates some of the spread of this area here. And likewise, up in here in Division Mike, or up here by Cherry Lake and all that kind of thing. So again, sixty-five miles of chipping, two miles of hand, hand lines work, and a lot of effort is going on through, through this, around, around this area of putting it back into, to rest, if you will. And we have still fifteen-hundred firefighters out there. The cost to date is one hundred and fourteen million, and one hundred and fourteen million with ten injuries to date, which is a good, I mean, that's kind of a good record, but really, if one person is hurt, that's too many. But there has been ten injuries on the fire, mostly minor. I don't think, there's one, one person that had some, some burns going into a stump hole. There was a lot of stump holes there, fell into a stump hole up to, deep into their leg there, and got some pretty good, significant burns there. But other than that, some, what we would consider minor injuries. They're out and they're working. You know, that's a good thing. Oh, transition. Today, today we have another team coming in that is going to transition to us. We've gone here about sixteen days. It is time for this team to rotate out. There will be another team coming in today. At ten hundred hours, they will be going into a transition meeting to, that we will be handing off the baton to them, giving them the updates of where we're at, what we're currently doing, and, and then they will take it on from there. We've been working with a lot of folks here. We've been trying to find a lot of cattle out here, and trying to identify, trying to help the cattleman with finding cows and identifying where those are at. I think we found about twenty of them, twenty or, twenty or thirty of them, and, and just working this area, trying to get this back. We're working on trying to get people back into their infrastructures, Aspen, Aspen Meadows, back into, we've got people in the Evergreen, and, and other places here, to where we're trying to get them back as fast as we can, and trying to get those roads and snag the area so that it's, it's safe for many people. There's still an area of closure around the fire, and probably will be for some time to, to hold, to, to make sure that this thing is safe, until it's safe. We're working with SPI, I just met with SPI yesterday. They're working on looking at some of their lands out here in, in the Woods Ridge area, and some of those stuff out in Duck Wall, and look, they're assessing and starting to get some of their folks in there to take out some timber. Questions?
Any questions of Commander, Commander McGowan?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is Todd Ellsworth with the bear team.
Good morning, I'm Todd Ellsworth. I'm the bear team leader, burned area emergency response for the Forest Service, addressing post-fire impacts of the rim fire. So I'd like to discuss a little bit about what burned area emergency response or bear is, and talk about some of our initial findings, what we're seeing on the ground, talk about timeframes and next steps. So burned area emergency response is a program that a group of specialists, we have soil scientists, hydrologists, geologists, biologists, archaeologists, and we, we address imminent threats to life, safety, property, natural and cultural resources after the fire. And the way this fits in to the whole kind of post-wildfire rehabilitation, as Jerry said, his team is working on some of the suppression rehab, aggressively getting that done, rehabbing dozer lines, hand lines, hell of spots, all those kinds of things, putting it as close to pre-fire conditions as we can. And usually, what we do, what the bear team does, is when the fire is about forty, fifty, sixty, seventy percent contained, we start looking at what types of values there are on the fire, like, is there, is there going to be potentially critical threats to life and safety, endangered species, cultural resources? And we start to assemble a team based on what we think those critical values are. And then we start to, when it's safe, we work with the fire team, when it's safe to get on the ground in certain areas, we start doing that assessment. And it's a very, the purpose of the program, it's a very rapid assessment to identify those imminent threats, generally before the first runoff-producing storm in the winter, and then prescribe treatments to help mitigate and manage those risks. So that's what we're doing right now. And then, so we do that, and then, of course, there's, the next step is long-term restoration. What we, one of the key products of the bear team is the soil burn severity map, which we brought up here. And basically, what we, what we want to look at is what are the effects of the fire on, on soil and watershed resources? Like Jerry said, this fire burns in a mosaic, and it also affects, affects the soil resource in a mosaic. And the reason we focus on that is so we can, we use that map to determine where some flood source areas are, where we're going to get excessive erosion, where there could be debris flow potential, and then we match that up with some of our critical values to see what's, see what's going on. We also use this map to do a lot of our soil and hydrologic modeling, so we can get an idea, kind of relative idea of what's going to go on throughout the fire area. So this, and that's, that's the purpose of this map, and that's the only purpose that this map should be used for at this point. So right, what we found was that, based on, based on our observations, and we, we get a, we get something called a burned area reflectance classification map first from satellites, so it makes this job a lot easier. We used to have to fly around in helicopters and draw large polygons, and go up to, go up to high points and do that. So this makes it a lot easier, and we just, we can do some adjustments to it pretty rapidly compared to in the past. So we, we found a seven percent high and about thirty-seven percent moderate burn severity, and those are the areas that we'd be concerned about for excessive post-fire erosion, sedimentation, and potential for higher peak flows and debris flows. So those are the areas that we're going to spend some time on, and look, look downstream at what types of critical values might be impacted from that. So we did a real, when we got here, we did a real rapid initial assessment, focusing on some critical life and safety things that we could, we could address pretty quickly. So we, we did an initial report that the forest supervisor signed, and the regional office approved for about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And we have, we have that money on the forest right now, and we have an implementation team starting to formulate contracts, and getting people on the ground to do things. And this includes starting to do some stormproofing of, of roads, starting to clean culverts, starting to put up hazard signs, and, and address some hazard tree issues that we have in, in areas. So we're getting that going. We wanted to get that done fast. We sort of get our ore in the water, and get, get a team here, implementation team here, and get all those things rolling for us. So the timeframes we're looking at, you know, this is, this is a rapid assessment. We're doing it very quickly. So we have, we anticipate having the bulk of our analysis reports and recommendations to the forest supervisor by early next week, potentially Tuesday or Wednesday next week. And so that would, that would basically, at that point, that would basically kind of conclude the bulk of the bear analysis, and we would, the team as we have right now would be disbanded, for the most part, transitioning to more implementation than assessment. And we, we feel pretty good about that timeframe. We feel like we can meet it. We're pushing forward to do that. At that point, so at that point, we would have, have a, we anticipate a large package of potential treatments. We're looking at, there's quite a bit of road work that we think needs to happen out there. We've also been working really closely with Hetch Eetchy, City of County of San Francisco, looking at their infrastructure, and looking at some of the main access, main access roads, and, and making sure that we address those potential impacts to culverts and debris flows over the roads, and all those kinds of things. And one of the, one of the critical things in this process is inter-agency coordination, and we've, we've reached out, we're working, we're working very closely with the park service, bear team, the park services addressing some of their land. We're sharing resources, back and forth, sharing modeling, sharing soil scientists, those types of things. So we want to make sure that this is all-lands approach. We also work very closely with the Natural Resources Conservation Service on what, addressing some of the potential effects to private land throughout the fire area and below the fire area, among others. We're planning on having a public meeting here in Sonora on Thursday to start, you know, outreach to the public, discussing some of our findings. We've also had quite a few inter-agency stakeholder meetings that they will be able to identify some critical values at risk that people are concerned about. And we're having lots of coordination meetings throughout the county, getting feedback and understanding what people's concerns are, and tracking that through the process. So that's kind of in a nutshell where we're at, where we're going, and what's been happening.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
Just, you mentioned that right now you have a funding of about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that's available that you're using. What, do you foresee the amount being in the end? I know it's just, it'll be a guess at this time, but can you come up with a figure of what we're looking at?
So I, there, you know, we're looking really closely at, at roads, and that's, that's kind of coming out to be one of the most critical values that we're looking at, both from a health and safety standpoint and from infrastructure investment standpoint. So that, you know, we're looking at culverts, cleaning culverts, stormproofing a lot of roads, and some of the major roads like Cottonwood Road, potentially putting in some other structures like snorkels, so it can pass the storm flow properly, and Storm Patrol. So I, I would anticipate our recommendation to be several million dollars for this next go-around, around there.
Right, thank you.
Ms. Brennan?
Yeah, so with seven percent severe and thirty, I think you said thirty-seven percent moderate, looking at that forty-four percent, can you give us some idea of the landscape out there on that country? Is that pretty much what you would consider toast? I'm thinking about what, what percentage of, this is going to need some very serious attention to restoration efforts.
So what that, what that means is, is that basically those, that thirty-seven percent and seven percent are generally where there is tree mortality. And where we have, there's been, there's been a lot of impacts into soils, and looking, and there are potential flood source zones.
Okay, so that forty-seven percent landscape is going to be, have a higher level of salvage and restoration efforts that will be needed?
I can't really, that's, that's a forest decision.
Well, we'll ask the forest if there, anybody here from the forest want to come in on that?
I guess I'm asking if that's a fair assumption.
Need to state your name.
Yes, I'm Jerry Snyder. I'm Forest Public Affairs Officer. And yeah, I believe that we're going to be looking at a lot of areas that are going to be needing work. So we have a number of teams that we're going to be putting together to do some assessment. So that is still in the works. Now, what you're looking at here is a soil severity damage. And so we're going to be actually looking more intently on the forest in, with other teams as to the possibility of timber salvage and that sort of thing. So there are some differences between what Todd is talking about here and what we're going to be working on into the future.
Did you have a question, Mr. Rodifer? I do. Mr. Ellsworth, a couple of comments. One is, I think, when you give percentages, that kind of diminishes the, the real severity of it. The severely burned areas on the map behind you, I assume, are the red.
Correct.
Seven percent of four hundred square miles is twenty-eight square miles. I believe that is, would ordinarily be considered a significant fire in and of itself, and it's scattered all over. So I don't think, it's not, my point is, for the public's benefit, is it's not trivial. And the moderately burned area is more than a hundred and forty-eight square miles. We have a huge task, and I'm curious what you think the effort might be, be required, either in dollars or time or both, to, to attempt to, to do something with all that land.
Okay, I'll attempt to, but I might need Jerry's help. So again, like, the bear process is pretty narrowly focused. It's just for emergency stabilization. We, the forest will certainly use our information, since we've had a lot of people out there, a lot of highs looking at, doing a lot of analysis to help formulate long-term restoration needs and wants and desires. But, you know, for our purposes, you know, we, we really look at, you know, what the, what the burn severity is, what types of post-fire erosion, sedimentation, we're looking at, and then if there, if it is an adverse effect to critical resources, then we try to address that in, in emergency stabilization fashion.
So how long does it take, and how does it cost to do something like this? Restore it, rehab it?
So like, long-term?
Well, I, I, I mean, clearly, clearly, at least my, my naive approach to things, it must be that the most severely burned area would get priority, twenty-eight square miles, and it's scattered. It's not contiguous. So what does it take? Give us a feel for the magnitude of restoration. I mean, is it a million dollars a square mile, or is it five dollars a square mile? And how long does it take? What kinds of things need to be done?
Okay. So what we, what we're going to look at is that we, we're looking at a lot of roads and infrastructure. We're also looking at what types of impacts there might be from, from soil erosion, mostly in these high severity areas. Some of these high severity areas are pretty isolated. So other than, other than the hill slopes eroding, and there's going to be a lot of sediment, ash in the creek, there aren't a lot of other values that we would look at from, from this process. That doesn't mean that the forest wouldn't be addressing some impacts in a long-term process. And so to answer, I'm trying to answer your, get a feel, answering your question, and we, we don't have, you know, we don't, we're looking at these areas, and we don't have our analysis completely done. So we have the initial one done, our initial take, and we got some money on the forest to start addressing some of those things. But the, kind of, the bear policy is pretty, is fairly narrow. We have pretty narrow authority on what we can and can't address. And it has to be very, we have to make a pretty compelling case on site-specific basis on what the risks might be and the threats. And if we do something that will mitigate that before the regional office or Washington office give us money for that.
Okay. I apologize for this, but I'm going to kind of interrupt the presentation a little bit because Chief and Commander McGowan I hear has to leave, and we want him going doing what he's doing. But I have something for you from the Board of Supervisors, and I'd like to present it if I could, before you have to go back. So would you come forward, Chief?
Yeah.
You don't even have to say anything yet. Chief McGowan, I can't tell you how much our county is grateful and appreciative of the work you and your incident team, command team, has done here. Just like the Blue Team, you guys have come in and you just went at this thing twenty-four, seven, literally, for, what, sixteen days, something like that. And we appreciate it. So we have something that we'd like to give you, except for the Team One, and it's presented to you and recognizes the outstanding management you've done on two thousand thirteen rim fire. We are most appreciative of everything, and you're one of our local guys, so we, we love you even more. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we can continue the discussion, but I, I didn't want him to leave, and he felt he had to leave, so had to do that. We do appreciate Team One, Chief McGowan, and, and all of the people on that team. They've sacrificed dearly to support this county and to deal with this fire and fire incident, and we appreciate you too, Mr. Ellsworth. But, but anyway, so we wanted to do that. So I, sorry for interrupting your presentation, but I thought it was important, so you can go back to work, doing what you need to do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Any more questions of Mr. Ellsworth?
So just to try to answer your question a little more thoroughly, some, we've looked at the high and, most focusing on the high and some of the moderate severity areas, and those are the areas that, that we look at for hill slope treatments, such as aerial mulch, and those types of things, you know, to stabilize the soil, reduce erosion, and reduce sedimentation in the stream channels and peak flows. So, so those are some things that we're critically looking at right now, where those areas might be appropriate throughout the fire area. And I, and I know the forest is going to be, you know, taking a hard look at the future restoration needs, and assembling a team, and, and probably coming up with some, you know, solid recommendations, and, and all those kinds of things in a timeframe, too.
Okay, well, I just wanted to point out, because seven percent doesn't sound like a very big number, but it's a huge task because we have a huge fire, and if I take the severe and moderate And if I take the severe and moderately burned areas, we've got 176 square miles of land that needs, some of it desperately needs some rehab. The other comment I'd like to make is, you put in a request, I think this is listed on the year update of September 14th, for $363,000 round numbers. Road stabilization, and I'm just doing this for the public's benefit, is 155,000 of that round numbers. Hazard tree removal is 15,000. Markers, warning and hazard signs are almost 82,000. Barricades and gates are 63,000. I don't know what vault toilet ceiling is, but that's 6,000. And hazardous material erosion control is 20,000. Implementation is 22,000. Lot of, lot of money for a lot of things that need to be done, and I suspect that the hazardous, hazard tree removal number is just a start.
Yeah, that's correct. This was, this was something just to get things going, get our ore in the water, get some money on the Forest, get implementation people here. And we're really, the last couple of days, we've really been working on moving some people from assessment to implementation, getting, getting other crews from other Forests, getting, looking at contracting, getting all those things going. We have, we have people on, people on the team that are focused on moving that forward, working with the Forest, moving forward on that. So, and we, and we, that's kind of been a typical thing we do now on large fires, is in the past, we've, we've waited till the end and then put in a large request, but we wanted to, we found that it's better to, you know, do a quick assessment, put in initial requests, get things going, and then continue our assessment and said, probably, you know, sometime early Tuesday, Wednesday next week, we'll be, we'll be pretty much done with that large part of the assessment, our analysis, treatment formulation, present that to the Forest Supervisor.
Okay, I'd like to offer the opportunity to the public to ask questions if they have any. Any questions from the public? Oh, we do have one. Want to come up? Need to have you on the microphone and state your name.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Facilla, and my question to him is, I don't think that he has too much to do with it, but I wonder if anyone is working on any sort of, of, you know, feeding the animals that are coming, that have been, that have come out of the forest and are coming down here and then taking care of, you know, what's going to happen when they continue to come because they're looking for food? That's my question.
I don't know. Can the Forest Service answer that question?
As far as having a specific team right now dealing with that, we don't have one on board. What you're going to see is that over, starting, and we've already started these teams, we're going to have specialized groups looking at very specialized interest. We have Forest biologists and hydrologists and scientists that are needed in various groups and teams that we're going to be setting up. They're going to be quickly overwhelmed. You can imagine that we already had a workload for all of these people in our normal annual amount of work that we prepare. So we're going to be getting more people from outside the San Slos National Forest to be put on these teams. We've got a fuel treatment effectiveness report that's out, a team that really took a look at some of those treatment areas we've already had and how successful they've been. That's going to help us prepare for the future. We're talking about specifics on impacts to a wide range of animals. We've had our biologists out there taking a look at this. They've seen, and you might have seen some of the reporting in the newspaper. There are some things we can do right away, kind of emergency repairs. There are other things that we're going to have to take a longer look at, you know, their herds will be migrating back and forth, and so we'll need to see what there is for, to feed them. So to answer the question, right now, we don't have a team specifically looking at how to feed animals that are moving out of the burned area. But what was mentioned, this is a mosaic, so there are lots of still green areas for them to move into. There's going to be a competition, and that's what you're going to see probably throughout this rehabilitation period, is various animal groups and plant species competing for space and nutrition and water as we go on.
Have you, last week at the Natural Resources Committee meeting, there was a member of Fishing Game, California Fishing Game there, they offered their assistance. Have you engaged them?
I can't say that I know of that particularly, but I do know that we're working with all the agencies that have been in part of this fire response, and they've been on board as well. So I would imagine that as we start sorting out where these assessment teams are, that's when we'll be looking at the best agency and their resources to be on board.
Okay, and one more question, I think, from Mr. Ellsworth. For the public's benefit, you mentioned there's a meeting Thursday night with the Bear Team. Where will that be and what time will it be?
That will be here, and I believe at 6 o'clock, 7:00.
Board of Supervisors Chambers at 7:00 PM on Thursday, the 19th.
County Supervisors Chambers, for the record. And then we're tentatively scheduling one at Groveland on Monday.
Okay. Any more questions of Mr. Ellsworth of the team?
Just one, and I'm not, I'm not sure how much you want to comment on it, but I think the public does need to be aware that there will be species migration out of the burned areas, and that that will affect some of our neighborhoods or whatever, or some of our living space. Is there any plan on the part of the Forest to have any assessment of what that magnitude might be or what we might have, have a public briefing or comment on it?
As I mentioned before, there are going to be a number of assessment teams, and I can't really hand that out to you right now as to which, you know, areas will be starting out first and who we're going to have on board. But certainly the wildlife population is one of our very serious concerns. What, and what you're talking about is, you know, that wildlife moving into populated areas. So the wildlife biologists that I've talked to indicate that, yeah, there is going to be some of that, as there is on an annual basis, and they may be taking more advantage of that as, as things progress here and, but I'll tell you, even driving through the burned area, just as, from last Friday, there are areas already, right now, that are turning green. Plants are sprouting up through this. So it is rehabilitating itself in some regard. It's going to be a hard pull through all of this, but we really have to see how much is going to happen naturally and what areas are going to need our help.
Any further questions?
Yeah, just a quick, quick word of encouragement, because Jerry, I know that, I'm glad to see that there are some green areas out there. But driving out there, we know this landscape, to a large degree, has been nuked, okay? And I would really be encouraging you, California Fishing, Fishing Game, sorry, wildlife, yes, our names keep changing here. They are specifically tasked with management of the wildlife animals. And it's kind of a weird dynamic because you're tasked with the habitat, they're tasked with, you know, managing the wildlife. And I cannot encourage you strongly enough to be working with them in a very coordinated effort and taking their recommendations as far as what movement we're going to see and what the impacts are going to be, because I think there is some concerns that they could be substantial. And that expertise is going to be invaluable if you really take it and use it, and not just the assumptions of possibly the Forest Service biologists.
Yes, and we do work with them closely. And let me kind of lay something out for you that is going to be a big concern for us and is a concern for California Fish and Wildlife and the Forest Service, and that is that a large area of the forest is closed under a forest order for safety. What that means is that deer hunting season, rifle season that is coming up very soon, people aren't going to be able to go in these areas to hunt these deer. And you know the importance of doing that, to thin out herds and whatnot. So there is going to be, like I said, this kind of competition, and we will be working closely with California Fish and Wildlife and other agencies to see whatever it is that we can do to mitigate the impacts.
Okay. Supervisor Rutherford?
This is a public, just a comment for the public. Just because a road is open, such as Highway 120, does not mean that the area around that road is necessarily safe, okay? We've heard a lot of discussion about the mosaic and all of that. I will tell you that Jerry McGowan's team had a couple of very severe burned incidents. These are experts, they're used to fighting fires, and they got caught unaware, okay? So if you are, if the public is traveling on the roads that are open, just the roads open. It doesn't mean that you can go off on a side road or you can park your car and get out and walk into the burn area. It's a very dangerous landscape out there, and it's very common in natural disasters of all sorts, and especially forest fires, to have a rash of incidents, injuries, after the heat, the real hot heat of the fire is out. This thing's going to be smoking into the springtime, okay? There's going to be places out there that are dangerous all the way through the winter storms. So please, we've opened up the roads so people can go do their commerce and their recreating, but stay in the safe areas. Please do not go out into the dangerous areas. Thank you.
I might add, if you try and go in, you'll also be competing with the recovery effort because those people being there doing it, we need to keep those people safe, too. Okay, any public questions? Okay, we have a resolution that we want to pass, but I have a card that Mr. Maxwell would like to speak on this item. Mr. Maxwell, I can't give you 10 minutes.
I'm sorry.
It's, you want to speak on number nine, right?
Right.
Okay. Can you do it in about three?
I'm Oliver Maxwell, live, retired engineer, Easton, Aron.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's item nine you want to speak on. I'm sorry, this, we're still on item eight. I apologize. I'll get you in a minute. You want to speak on item nine? Correspondence with the, the Bear Team and the Forest Supervisor?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're on item eight still. It's my fault.
So I got a few minutes?
No, we'll get you in the next item.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, there is a resolution to continue the state of emergency, correct? We need to pass that, is there a?
I move to continue the state, pass the resolution, continuing the state of emergency.
Do your second.
I'll second.
You have anything you want to comment to it?
I do not.
Okay. Any member of the public want to speak on this? Board? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry unanimously, with Supervisor Royce absent. Okay, now, would you read item nine?
Consideration of approving correspondence, let me start over. Okay, consideration of approving correspondence to the Stanislas National Forest Supervisor's request to creation of an immediate incident command team to expedite the dead timber salvage operations and the recommendation from the burn area emergency response team for the rim fire.
Mr. Chairman, Daniel Richardson will handle this item, but the Bear Team representative and Jerry needed to get back to that briefing.
Okay.
They did have to leave, asked if they could stay, but they really did need to get back, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, and we thank them for being here and for giving us the up-to-date information. Mr. Richardson?
Good morning. Daniel Richardson, Deputy County Administrator. I think as we have heard today, that the rim fire fortunately is nearing full containment. It is time to shift our efforts to suppression, from suppression to recovery. And that's exactly what the Natural Resources Committee discussed the other day at its committee meeting, was the need to encourage the efforts of recovery. And this particular item addresses two issues. One is implementation of the Bear Team's recommendations and also the salvage of the burned timber. What is recommended through this letter is to establish an incident command-type structure to address the recovery efforts. This would ensure the continued communication, that the good communication that's occurred through the suppression efforts, inviting the various agencies, such as the county and other federal and state agencies and local agencies, to continue the input to make sure that recovery is full and is done to completion and to, so that everybody can, including animals and plants and recreationists, can enjoy the forest once again. So we have a letter that is directed to the Forest Supervisor that would establish these, that would complete these goals. So the letters for your, it's a draft letter, it's here for your editing, and we can send that off and get this process started.
Questions of Mr. Richardson?
Just one has to do with who we're trying to copy this letter to, other than the Forest Supervisor, the world, pretty much, in general.
So you want state, federal representatives?
Yes.
CSAC, RCRC?
Regional Forester.
Yes. There's a lengthy list that we discussed. I'll make sure those all get on there.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Rutherford?
I'm wondering if it's worth including a third bullet on items of particular concern to the Board of Supervisors, and that would be the, the public visibility into the decision-making process for, for actual implementation of restoration activities.
I'm sorry, explain.
Yeah, I would like the public to see all of the information that is being used by the Forest Management in their decision-making process, and I think that having an incident team that has periodic reports would be a good avenue to do that.
Okay. So could we add that item, please?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any further questions from the board? Now we'll ask for some public comment. Mr. Maxwell, would you like to speak? Can you do it in three minutes? I can't give you 10. Three. Three.
I'm an advocate of free enterprise. I'd like to see.
You state your name.
Oliver Maxwell, retired engineer, Easton, Aron. I would like to see the private owners get first restitution as to future claims on some property to pay them back for their losses. And they could also help in clearing the forest, that sort of thing. In other words, the private companies could take the forest out, the burnt trees. Also, the fire department has done an outstanding job, and they have a knowledge that nobody else has. They could draw lines on this map as to where they wish they had fire breaks, and some of the bridges and gullies. And also, they could, the streams are going to have a flood, flash flood, and a lot of debris coming down that will pollute everything on, clear out through to the Golden Gate. And why not put a lot of little check dams in now as soon as possible so mitigate that? And speaking of dams, like Hattachie is an ideal, and there is room for another half a dozen of them. And having dams in parallel, you can store energy. It's the only way you can store energy. So if you could buy surplus from the winds and the solars at nickel, pump it uphill, and then take it down, the energy out when you need it for the peaks. So you might get two bits of, a district for fire and, I mean, for water and energy would be very beneficial. California has a lot of history on that. I think there should be an area of... I think there should be an area of asking Congress for deeding the property to the Board of Supervisors who dispose of it in private property. And there's no need for a lot of zoning because there's no conflict between forest and fishing, between cattle and ski drives, ski slopes, and hospitality in support of the Yosemite which does not allow it. So you have the authority and the situation to take the lemon you, that you've inherited and making lemonade by turning it into private enterprise. So take the lead and you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Mr. Richardson, if you take Mr. Maxwell's comments and refer them to the Natural Resources Committee for further action and consideration. It's beyond the scope of our agenda item today, but we can consider it there. Okay? Yeah. And Mr. Maxwell, you'd be invited back to the Natural Resources Committee to address the committee.
Thank you.
I think it's the second Tuesday of the month. Okay. At nine o'clock in these chambers. Okay. Any further comment on the letter? Could I have a motion to approve the letter as amended?
I move to approve sending the letter from the board, signed by the chair, as amended.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Any further comments, public? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Okay. I'd like to take item nine A, which is the emergency item, and ask for the presentation, if you will, from the staff on this item.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, please.
Consideration of ratifying the proclamation of a local health emergency by the county health officer regarding the threat of public health from hazardous waste in the area encompassed by the rim fire.
Mr. Costlevi?
Rob Costlevi, Community Resources Agency, Division of Environmental Health. As you have seen today through the presentation of the rim fire team and the comments by Mr. Richardson, a new phase of this fire is the recovery aspect. And the recovery aspect that we, that environmental health has been charged with is the debris cleanup of the properties. The state of California, most notably California Environmental Protection Agency, or CalEPA, has strict guidelines or standards for that, for the removal of hazardous materials from each burned structure. These requirements are specific testing for asbestos, lead, cadmium, other heavy metals, lead acid batteries. It's actually, you know, it's probably costly to do that, and it's burdensome on the homeowner. So through the hard work of Ms. Shane, County Council, and the agreement we came up with with CalEPA, their umbrella agency, the Department of Toxic Substances Control, has agreed to come into our county and go to each private residence, test, and remove and segregate all the hazardous materials for that individual at no cost to the homeowner and no cost to the county. And part of the agreement, though, is we need to get right of entry. And that's what this proclamation allows for the environmental health director to oversee DTSC as a contractor and any contractor they bring in. And one note that I'd like to make is we do have a right of entry form, and we will attempt to get every property owner to sign up before we actually make entry.
Would this include, for instance, Camp Berkeley?
That is a public organization, so at this time, they are not included in that.
Well, I know they had a stack of lead batteries sitting there, and I saw that didn't know what was going on, so that's probably, perhaps you'd contact them and suggest they do something to allow the team.
I've already attempted that a couple times. Camp, or the city of Berkeley, has their own contractor right now, and they are applying for permits.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, I just want to make sure we get everybody.
Oh, totally.
Okay. Any further questions?
Just one. You said you're going to attempt to get each of the property owners to sign. If they, if you can't find them or they won't sign, what's our options?
Well, the main option is we're going to attempt to go in there, and if there's no lock gate, we're going to go in there and clean it up. And this is a huge benefit for these residents because the typical cost of testing and segregating of the hazardous material can range anywhere from $3,500, you know, for just an outbuilding, to up to $12,000 to $15,000 for the larger structures. So it's going to benefit them in every way.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further?
Just a comment for being proactive on this and getting ahead of it. It's really important for those people that have those losses to have some help, so thank you.
Just a clarification too. You're going onto the property with this specific task, and you're not, just so they have assurances, of course, you're not looking at any other aspects of the property except removing the hazardous waste.
That's correct. And if we, we're looking at it as, if there's any type of hazardous waste, no questions asked, we're just going to remove it. And we're not going to go knocking on, why do you have this? We're just removing it.
Okay. Any public comment?
Good morning again. My name is Kathy Visella, and my property rights bill is really going off with this. I realize that they have a specific thing that they want to do, but I really believe that as a private property owner, people have a right to tell people what they can remove and not remove on their property. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else, public? Okay. Chair, entertain a motion?
I'm a little confused. What action is actually being requested of us?
It's an emergency resolution.
Todd Stulp already signed his declaration.
Mr. Chairman, what we are asking the board to do this morning, another part of the process is that your board needs to ratify Dr. Stulp's proclamation. So we are asking your board to ratify.
Okay. In that case, I move to ratify Dr. Stulp's proclamation.
Second.
Any further comment from the board? Public? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Would you read item 10, which is also fire-related?
Presentation on the Highway 108 Fire Safe Council Activities.
Daniel Richardson, Deputy County Administrator. I just want to introduce this item briefly. As a result of the rim fire, we wanted to have some focus on some of the fire prevention activities that have taken place prior to the rim fire. And so we have here the Fire, the Highway 108 Fire Safe Council. Glenn Gottschall is the current president, also Jerry Tannhaus is the past president for many years, to make a brief presentation on their activities.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board and general public. Again, my name is Glenn Gottschall. I am the president of the Highway 108 Fire Safe Council. Here today to follow up on a request by Chairman Hanvell, who wanted us to give a little bit more information on the Highway 108 Fire Safe Council and our role and activities. First off, I'd also like to introduce Rick Wybra, who is the current president of the Yosemite Foothills Fire Safe Council. Rick will also assist me a little bit here today. The Fire Safe Council was, and the 108 Fire Safe Council was actually formed in 2002. This is a result of a series of fires that occurred in the year 2000, kind of promoted the passage of what they call the National Fire Plan, and all Fire Safe Councils, which are all 50C, 3, 1, is that right? 50C, 3...
5013C.
5013C, nonprofit organizations. We're dedicated basically to improving public awareness of wildland fire dangers and the need for defensive space. We're assisting the public in developing defensive space and also reducing hazardous fuels. Within this county, there's probably 15,000 plus or minus homes that all are required to have defensive space, but in addition to that, we also like to give them a buffer and protective facilities to remove hazardous fuels. We're working with fire agencies to develop a system of fuel treatments and shaded fuel brakes to protect the communities. One of the, in addition to the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, otherwise known as the CWPP, which guides our efforts, we have joined with many agencies within the county and particularly the Highway 108 corridor to develop a strategic plan. This is much like the SWIFT plan, which you'll hear about in a little bit. What I'd like to do now, and grant your indulgence if we have the time, Daniel, would you start scrolling through this, and I'll try to briefly describe some of the work that has been done and what a fuel break and fuel's treatment really looks like. The first area is in Twainheart Lake area. It's just, actually just adjacent to the area where all the swimming and recreation activities take place. This is the before picture. Scroll. This is the after. This is what a shaded fuel break looks like. In fact, this may still be a little bit heavy from my standpoint, but what this is designed to do is prevent a fire that starts from going from the ground fuels up into the crowns. It's called, in our terminology, removing ladder fuels. Go ahead. Here's another example of treatment of a power line corridor. And we have joined with PG&E. In fact, PG&E is now cooperating with us and not only felling hazard trees that may hit these power lines, but also removing additional trees and providing us funding and in-kind contribution for this type of work. Go ahead. This is a parcel on Montgomery Road. This is a old roadway, a wagon road that went from Phoenix Lake Road up to Big Hill Road and eventually up to some of the mining areas. This area is also just on the west side of Phoenix Lake Estates. So by putting in these fuel brakes, we have a place where these fires can be stopped, much like occurred over in the Pine Mountain Lake area. And luckily, we didn't have to stop it in the North Fork, Tohaleby City area. This is in the Pine Mountain Lake area, showing some of the tremendous fuel loading that is just on the north side of Pine Mountain Lake. And this is after we've done the mastication. Now, this is a typical type of treatment. Mastication is done with large machines. I'll show you an example of that a little bit later, but it basically just chews up the trees, leaves the vegetative material on the ground. This material, in about five years, will start disintegrating, and in 10 years, you won't even know that it's there. Here again is an area that's west of Pine Mountain, I mean, I'm sorry, Phoenix Lake Estates, on Yerba Santa Road. This shows an example of what we call a fire chimney. Before that, there had been no way to stop that fire from destroying the home up at the upper end of this drainage. Again, a picture of Pine Mountain Lake area, and an after. It looks a little bit blitzed, but our objective also in Pine Mountain Lake is to reconvert some of the vegetation from just pure brush and oak, scrub oak trees, to something else. We're going to try to get more pine established in this area. This is an example of the masticator, or the, it's a Timco, which is originally designed just for harvesting trees, but they have modified it to be able to put what they call a fecon head, which is basically just a big shredder on the front of it. And of course, we worked very closely with CDC, California Department of Corrections, crews, to do some of our handwork. And this is just an example of some of the fuel break pile and burning. Thank you. I've always heard a picture is worth a thousand words, so I bought you some time. Okay. In addition, there's a number of different areas we concentrated on because of the large number of youth and other organizations that attend these facilities. One of them is Sierra Outdoor School, which at any time can have up to 300 students and other organizations. And Old Oak Ranch is another area we've worked with. I'd like to now have Rick, would you come up and talk a little bit about your area?
The smoke is killing me. My throat is so sore.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rick Wybra. I represent the 120 Fire Safe Council, otherwise known as the Yosemite Foothills Fire Safe Council. I'm fairly new there, just a couple months, but I thank you for letting me come over and just discuss a few things that we've been doing up there. I presently was employed by Pine Mountain Lake for over 13 years. I was fortunate enough, even though there was a lot of timbering and other fire abatement work being done prior to my showing up there, a bunch of us got together and decided it was time to do, be a little more aggressive on both individual lots and all the other acreage that Pine Mountain Lake owns, such as green belts, common areas, that type of thing. So we started in '07, '06 and '07, we started this aggressive program called, it was a five-year jumpstart program. I know a few of you have discussed this with before. So in '08, we funded $100,000, the board did, the board of Pine Mountain Lake funded $100,000 a year for the first five years to aggressively go after mostly the green belt areas, and again, common areas. That was at least 800 acres of properties that were unbuildable, but they were either undeveloped units of Pine Mountain Lake, or they were just green belt areas that were not buildable. So we formed a plan, a five-year plan. We basically gave a report card to each treatment area, as we call them, and decided what to start with first. Now, of course, the worst, we started in '08. We aggressively did that for five years. We pretty much finished the program in four years. And in the fifth year of this year, in fact, 13, we started doing, I'm no longer there, but I keep saying "we," we started a maintenance program with the funding that is still available and being funded by Pine Mountain Lake Board. So we know it works. I've had a lot of comments. A lot of people enjoy seeing the work that we've done. Again, not just individual lots, but which we have encouraged all the property owners. There's 3,540 roughly properties, about 2,800 homes, but everyone is under the same guidelines as to what they have to do to clean their lots. And we have stiff penalties, and we even go in and clean their lots if they don't do it by a certain timeframe, and then just bill their account. That's a fortunate ability that Pine Mountain Lake has that a lot of other communities within the county don't have, but I think part of what the 108 Council, Glenn and Jerry and I have been discussing, maybe doing some more joint county-type things, instead of competing for dollars from these, from the funding folks, you know, maybe do some more work together for the entire county. And so I think we can kind of use Pine Mountain Lake as a role, that it can work if the dollars are present in an ongoing project, you know, we keep after it, both in the initial work and in maintenance work, of course. You know, if you let it grow back, you've accomplished nothing after the initial work. So I think as part of the Fire Safe Council now, I'm going to concentrate on, and Glenn and Jerry, on working with all the other communities and seeing what we can do to get funding in the grant writing that we do do. Unfortunately, there's a... Unfortunately, there's, I believe, $5 million available in 2014, and there's over 100 Fire Safe Councils in California competing for that dollar. So, that's difficult, because we have to really do a song and dance to get the funding and hope we get something and then go do our work. So, again, this is an ongoing issue. We didn't do it overnight at Pine Mountain. It took at least six years. And as far as I know, working with management there still, they continue to keep this program going. So, I think if we can extend that to all the other communities and, and get to know all of our neighbors and encourage them and educate them on what's necessary to make this a fire-wise county. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah. Any questions or comments?
Yeah. You know, it's, it's kind of like, we're, we're chasing a small amount of money all the time, yet we just spent over $100 million to try to put out a fire that fortunately didn't get into really a whole lot of residential property. So, you know, we're mixed up. We've got to figure out a way to make the state and the federal government understand to make more money available to make it fire safe versus trying to put out these fires. So, if there's anything that this board can do, or I can do personally to try to help that, I think we should do it.
Amen. Mr. Gottschall, would you mention your, I know you've got a current project that you're working on, mention that and the significance and the cost and...
Yes. We have a system of fuel breaks that basically run from Columbia up through Cedar Ridge, around Twainheart, Confidence, Ponderosa Hills, down to Tuolumne City. The Tuolumne City fuel breaks that were put in probably within the last five or six years were really instrumental, because those were the same ones they used as a safety zone for any fire that would have been eventually coming out of the North Fork. We have one last piece of the fuel break running from Columbia to Cedar Ridge, which is on the top of Big Hill. It basically runs from Old Oak Ranch Road along North Ridge to the Old Hattler Mill site. This, in fact, tomorrow I'll be meeting with the community, because one of our jobs is to basically sell the fact that we need these fuel breaks in certain key locations. We need the community's support, and we need their agreement to be on their property. So, we do have a selling job to do. We would, in fact, one of the things that we could utilize is more public education in the county of this need. And so, anything that you could do along those lines, and continued support of grant funding. Every year, it's been dwindling. Like Rick said, $5 million does not go very far in this state. We also have to be very competitive. In-kind contributions must be 50% match on all of our grant applications. It's, without CDC, without PG&E, and some other major contributors, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do that. Also, we're looking in the future to have a program that would be, to assist what I would call our special needs public. A lot of people are low-income, fixed income, don't have the money to do a lot of this defensive space work. So, we're looking at whatever kind of program could be developed to do that within the county. So, these, those are just a couple or a few of the things that we, we would like help with.
What time and where is your meeting?
Our meetings are...
You have one tomorrow, you said?
Our, yes. This is a special community meeting for that particular project. It's at 5:30 at Old Oak Ranch.
Oh, it's for the public, in case they didn't know about it, wanted to...
It is open to the public, yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the board?
Quickly, just, I agree with what Supervisor Gray was saying. This is just so important that we get this work done. And real briefly, Glenn, when you're doing this defensible space, can you kind of describe your taking out predominantly the brush and entries that are up to what size? They're small?
What we pretty much limit ourselves to is trees 12 inches or less in diameter. As, as an old forester, I'm saying that's its diameter breast height, four and a half feet, basically trees smaller than that.
Smaller than 12 inches. Thank you.
Yes.
Any further comments, questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And could we have item 11, please?
Presentation on the Southwest Interface Team Activities.
Daniel Richardson, Deputy County Administrator, wants to give another presentation by the Southwest Interface Team. This is Alan Johnson. He's the director of it. This is a funded through Secure Rule Schools money, and it is an agency that brings together a variety of, of other public agency heads to discuss fire prevention efforts. So, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Johnson.
Good morning, Alan Johnson, SWIFT Coordinator. We'll talk about the map here in a couple of minutes. Just a little bit of history on SWIFT. SWIFT was started back in 1999 by Tom James, who was the coordinator up until his resignation this past year, and then the board approved me to, to come in as the coordinator for the project. The project area is about 132,000 acres in southern Tuolumne County and northern Mariposa County. And since its inception in 1999, this area's been hit by six major wildfires, including the pilot, either directly or indirectly, the pilot, the hunter, the creek, Tuolumne, Don Pedro Telegraph, and now the rim fire. Much of the focus when Tom first got going with the SWIFT program was to develop a strategic fire defense system in the communities, Groveland, Pine Mountain Lake, Hell's Hollow, Buck Meadows, Greeley Hill, Colterville, Moccasin. And when we talk about strategic fire defense system, we're talking about a series of fuel breaks or roadside corridor treatments that we can utilize to either stop fires or the be areas where firefighters can make aggressive attacks and, and help stop the fire or do burnout-type operations. And one of the things that was very successful for us during the, during the rim fire was the, the rim truck fuel break, which comes from Buck Meadows and runs basically along the rim of the Tuolumne River Canyon. And that was utilized by the crews primarily, that was in the Unified Command portion, the CAL FIRE units were working the burnout operations on that area. And fuel breaks by themselves won't stop the fire. And even though some of the areas were in need of follow-up treatment, because they'd been five or six years from their past treatment, the footprint was well-established, and the brush that had come back was three-to-four-foot-high brush versus the surrounding vegetation of eight-to-15-foot-high brush. So, even though some of it was due for, for maintenance and scheduled to, for treatment, it hadn't gotten there yet, but it was still, the vegetation was light enough that when they brought the bulldozers in, they were able to drop their blades, move through the area very quickly to establish the line, so the crews could then come in and burn out the top of the river canyon and stay ahead of the fire as it was coming up the canyon there. So, it was a very strategic effort by all involved, and the SWIFT group is, is a very unique situation. It's been going on for 14 years now, and, and the players are CAL FIRE, both Tuolumne and Calaveras Unit, and the Merced, or Mariposa, Merced, Madera Ranger Unit, Bureau Land Management's involved, Forest Services is involved, Tuolumne County and Mariposa County Fire Departments, Hetch Hetchy Water and Powers involved. We include the two Fire Safe Councils, Yosemite Foothills and Mariposa Fire Safe Council, Groveland Fire Department's a player, Pine Mountain Lake Association, the Tuolumne County Resource Conservation District, and Yosemite National Park. And part of the advantage of, of having this collaborative group, although we don't, we don't handle money, but we make sure that all of the efforts that we're doing, and you talk about the rim track trail, it crosses from, from federal land of the Forest Service into private lands, Fire Safe Council's getting grant money to help with some of these projects. And with the collaborative effort of all these agencies involved, we can provide letters of support when they're proposing for grant funding, which is extremely helpful, because then it shows not, it's not just a single entity, but a, a group of folks that, that have identified that this is a strategic need within our community. So, it's really been helpful over the years. I know Yosemite Foothills Fire Safe Council, when Kelly Bearden was the, was the chair, was very successful in getting some money and a lot of projects done on the, the 120 corridor. But it also helps our, our partner agencies, and, and one example is, is the Bureau Land Management, Mother Love Field Office, has pretty much put most of their fuel treatment dollars into the SWIFT area, because they know it's a collaborative effort. They've spent the last two winters refreshing a bunch of the fuel breaks in and around the Groveland area, Wagner Ridge, some of the Ponderosa fuel break stuff. So, I think we can honestly say that, that some of the work that's been done, the coordinated efforts through SWIFT, was a, a real key portion of keeping this fire out of, out of Pine Mountain Lake and Groveland, and Big Oak Flat had it continued on its westerly course. One of the things I had just gotten, because I was working with, and Jerry mentioned it, some folks from the Washington office, looking at fuel treatments and successes, and I, I got an advanced copy of this, and, and I will get a copy out as soon as I know it's clear for me to send it out, but the rim truck fuel break is going to be highlighted as one of the success stories in this, in this report, that's going to, the initial report that's going to come out. So, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Not a question. I've been involved at the SWIFT meetings for a number of years now, and, and I must say, what is really good about it is everybody works together. There's, everybody's pulling for each other, and there's no jealousy, or all inter-agencies are just real solid on, on making positive gains on those fuel breaks. So, I want to thank SWIFT for all the hard work.
Thank you.
I noticed we have an attendance today, Chief Loshi and Chief Rudolph, and I'd heard comments from you. Would you care to make a comment on the, on the value of, of this, this effort? I just think it's so important that the public understand the value of these defensible space and these fire breaks, and this is a man who was the incident commander for CAL FIRE under Unified Command, so you want to tell us what your view is?
Steve Loshi, Tuolumne County, Calaveras Unit Operations Chief, Deputy Chief. I had to attend several of the SWIFT meetings and saw what they had done, and had a chance to get in Pine Mountain Lake and look at the clearances that they've had, and their 95% success rate, I think, for Pine Mountain Lake for their LE100 clearances. And I knew when the fire approached Freddie Road, that I could order enough resources to put on perimeter control and then have resources canvass in the area of Pine Mountain Lake, because they had good clearances, because they were well-prepared over what they've done. You know, in 1987, they were impacted, they formed in '92, and then started moving forward with the fuel breaks. So, what SWIFT has done with the Fire Safe Councils in this county is outstanding. I think it ought to be a model for the whole nation. And it sure helped me to be able to put the resources on the perimeter of the fire and put it out, and then we did not have any structure loss. There was a little inconvenience with evacuations, but the community of Pine Mountain Lake and Groveland areas should be commended for keeping their places clean and allowing the firefighters to get in there and just basically rake a few pine needles and move on to the next home and plan if the fire came out of the drainage there. So, it was a tremendous help to the incident command team, that I knew we could go more direct on the fire and not have to have a bunch of resources up around the, the structures, although we did have several in there, but we, it just paid off tremendously, and I think it's going to be a model for the nation.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? I want to thank all the Fire Safe Council people for being here and, and sharing this with, it's important the public know about this, and, and if the public's listening, please, please support these people. Keep the defensible space. The house you save may be your own. With that, I would like to take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene with public comment on our meeting. We'll take a 10-minute break, return here at 10:35. Thank you.